Education to Order. This is a regular meeting and it's Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Mr. Adams, would you cue the roll call, please?
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Thank you. All right, would you please stand for the religion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, would you like to start? Do you have any board comments?
Trying to get through the school buildings, start off a great year. I got to the high school already. Seems to be a lot of positivity, so it sounds like we're making our own joy, as Shelley said last meeting we had, so that's a good thing. My goal is to get to some of the others soon, so. But other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Dave?
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. No update from Columbus since election season. They're out of session. They'll probably come back in after the election in a lame duck. I'll update the board. I was in a northeast region, southeast region OSBA get-together. I will get that update from Jennifer Ho. There was a flurry of activity in June. At the end of June, the legislature was very busy. And good luck to Spartans. I've seen a couple of the girls' golf games. They're on fire, so it's been nice to see. And I just want to get out to see some of the other students at play. Thank you.
I haven't been to classrooms, sorry, where I'm in a busy season for my job. But I do try to go to everything afterwards. I was blown away on Friday night, anybody that was there. We had band alumni, we had Military Appreciation Night, we had Youth Night. I believe we had over 200 youth members, from cheer to football, that were called, ran across the field. We had Gavin Herndon that was sworn to the U.S. Navy, which got very emotional, actually. If you haven't seen any of the pictures, his mom's crying, I was crying, he was crying, everybody's crying. I take that pretty close to my heart, that that was done. I don't think that's something that a lot of people look into. It's the military best decision I ever made. College was not my thing. Went back to college later, but just a great, just a great night. I know the score wasn't how we would have wanted to, but there was a photographer on the sideline that usually does field games. And she came to our game for Gavin and said that there's something different. And they do, they play with a lot of heart. Like you, been to soccer, boys and girls, volleyball, junior high, and varsity. And there's something special going on. They're winning a lot, they're having a lot of heart, there's a lot of people that are pushing. So band sounds great. A lot of people stayed in the hurricane? I mean, can we call that? That happened last, about two weeks ago, with the Spartans win, and I think that was great. Tough team this week that we'll face. A lot of D1 athletes out of Streetsboro. So come on out, and it'll be a good time, so.
But I'm gonna tell you, I think we held our own that first half.
First half was great.
And we looked, I mean, I thought we, yeah. It was, it was, it was exciting.
Yeah, it was.
And we did, we did play with heart.
It was fun.
It was, it was good.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I look forward to this Friday night. I was out of town last week, so I missed some of the things I enjoy seeing. But from the conversations that I've had, the comments that I've heard, the students are feeling and parents are feeling they're off to a very good start. And that is music to our ears, that's for sure. So I thank everyone involved in getting us off to a good school year. Okay. And we will go to number five, approval of minutes. It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the August 20, 2024 board meeting.
Motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. At this time, we will have welcome citizens' comments on agenda items. Are there any citizens' comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to number seven, payments of the monthly bills. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of August pending an audit.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to pay the monthly bills.
May I say a word? I just want to take time, thank you, Shelley, for taking time explaining the turf tank, the new thing that, and I like gadgets, trust me. That's right up my alley, that sprays the lining of the field, the football field. And I see where you're going with it. I'll approve it this year. I like that. So I just want people to know that when we just say yes, there is a lot of discussion that goes behind, you know, the walls. And we look at things, so thank you for that.
And, and thank you for questioning. I do appreciate that. And it did look good, didn't it? Our S looked good.
I've never seen it like that before.
Really? And you're talking about the lining?
The lining, yeah. But we have a giant S in the center of the football, and then we have Spartans written in the end zones.
And it does shed, and it does.
Yes.
Our football field, soccer field.
Mm-hmm. It does, yeah. It's, it's quite amazing.
So it looked classy.
It really did.
That's good, that's good to hear.
Mr. Anderson.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number eight is the acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for August 2024, and these are provided in Exhibits Three, Four, and Five.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Adams, it's been moved in second.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Items Nine. These are all personnel items. It's recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 9.1 is a retirement resignation. This is to accept the retirement resignation of classified employee Donna Walker, effective October 1, 2024. 9.2 resignation, accept the resignation of the following classified employees. Jennifer Heron, effective September 12, 2024. Linda Britton, accepted, effective September 13, 2024. 9.3 is employ the following as classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screenings effective the first day assigned. And these personnel are Bill Chandler, Melanie Groves, Brenda Lamp, Linda McMahon, Eubanks, Phyllis Miller, David Reed, and Mary Steenor. 9.4, reassign the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective August 28, 2024. And that would be Kim Jovanovic is being assigned as account clerk at the administration building. And Debbie Reed has been assigned head building secretary at Springfield High School Junior High. 9.5, employ the following personnel per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening. And that includes Robert Kettler, four-hour standby driver; Yoshanda Beckett, five-hour standby driver; and Mary Steenor, two-hour educational assistant at Shrop Intermediate. 9.6 is an adjustment of hours. Approve the, adjusting the shift hours for the following position at Spring Hill Elementary due to staffing needs for, effective for this school year. Educational aide Stephanie Nadi from three hours to 2.25 hours. Resident educator, approve the following teachers to serve as resident educators facilitators for the 24-25 school year pending proper licensure and completion of required training on an as-needed basis. That include, those include names are Michelle Hannah, Kelly Humanansky, Stacy Manzo, Paula Murphy, Dina Screamo, Kelly Weiss, and Brett Zimmerman. And 9.8, approve the following certified staff members to serve as LPDC members for the 24-25 school year per the negotiated SLAC agreement. And those include Wendy Bluey, Kristy Hubert, Kelly Humanansky, Jennifer Ganzer, Mary Meadows, and Kim Starkey. Those are all the personnel items.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So I want to say a couple, yes, I want to say a couple things. Dustin?
First one there, Donna Walker, our cafeteria manager at Shrop, is retiring after about 40 years here. So one of the longest-serving employees in recent history there. So congratulate her on her retirement, wish her the best of luck because she, she's fed thousands of kids over the years. I believe that entire career, to my knowledge, has all been spent in food services there, so. A lot of us have eaten Donna's cooking. We'll, we'll miss her, and hopefully, as I said, wish her the best of luck in retirement.
Yeah, I think she's almost hit almost every school except the high school. I think she was at Spring Hill, Lakemore. I don't think she was at Roosevelt's. Oh, she might have been, I think she started at Roosevelt's. So I think she had every building, too.
Was she at Sawyerwood?
No, she wasn't at Sawyerwood. I don't, yeah, I don't remember that, seeing that on the list. Just a couple other things, just for explanation of what they are. The resident educator mentor facilitators. So every new teacher that's a one-year, they have to go through a two-year program, and they have to take what's called RESA, which is a test. And they're given a mentor to help them, and they meet weekly. Weekly?
They will meet with their individual mentor, yes.
They meet with their individual mentors weekly to just help them go through the different parts of the RESA. Because our goal is to make sure that they, that they pass it the first time through for it. Facilitators, those are given to our teachers who are a second year. So maybe our third, fourth, because ODE, DEW has changed it from four years to two years. LPDC, that stands for.
That's the Local Professional Development Committee?
That's it. I'm trying to think of what can L stand for?
It's just educational jargon. This is where teachers write their educational plan that they're going to do over the next five years from the time that they're licensed till the next time that they have to renew their license. And they have to work within the plan that they've written for themselves. It is a living, breathing document, so it can be adjusted throughout the process. But the committee gets together to work on, they work as a team in order to approve what we call an ippy-dippy, which is an individual professional development plan. Because everybody's is specific to the teacher.
And, and what they approve on is that, you know, you, you write your goals, and the idea is that you take classes or courses that are going to go to your goals. So before the, before the state created LPDC, this was about 20, I'm gonna say, oh my gosh, about maybe 24, 25 years ago, teachers could take whatever they wanted. So if I wanted to take basket weaving for.
That's always not basket weaving.
Okay.
Everybody always puts basket weaving down. I feel it's very therapeutic.
You usually don't teach.
Go ahead.
Okay. Nope, 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 you are absolutely right.
To follow up to that, the LPDC then also, they submit all their hours that they've taken, teachers submit all their hours that they've taken to the LPDC in order to count them up and to sign off on their license for the renewal process.
So a history teacher shouldn't be taking basket weaving.
Okay, maybe.
But that's part of history.
That is a part of history.
It's been into their goals.
Right, there you go.
Yes, they could work it into their day. But I'll give you an example, and this didn't happen here. But, you know, there was one teacher who wanted to, it didn't happen here, was a French teacher, and they wanted to count the time they went to France and sat on the strip and drinking wine and cheese, and counting that as hours. And the LPDC said, no. No. No, no, that doesn't constitute, but I'm learning this, no, no. So, so it's a tough job. Sometimes they get a little, people get a little bit.
Cultural diversity there.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay. I was on LPDC at that time, and I said, no.
Okay, good job. It didn't happen here.
It didn't happen here.
So we have some strong leadership in both of these categories.
Yes, we have some very strong leadership, so we're very proud of. And this is the first time, too, that along with the mentors, we also do other things. One of the things we told our principals to do is to make sure that they are walking in and visiting all our new teachers on a regular basis. And Jenny Ganzer did a first-year 101, where the teachers came in and she was able to meet with them. So, so we're doing a lot, because what we want to do is we want to make sure the teachers we get are good. We want to be able to retain them. And, and people do want to come to Springfield, so we are so excited that we want them to stay here.
That's good news.
It is, it was, it's really good news.
All right, Chris, we can vote.
Okay, thank you, Miranda.
Your motion first.
We already did. Miranda motion, Parker seconded.
Really? Okay. We're done?
No, we gotta vote.
Gotta vote.
Vote?
I'm being smart.
Okay, you're being snarky.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. And I'm gonna make one more comment about these two areas. When I came back to teaching in Ohio, you know, forget about the other states. But I came here, you went into the class, I went into the classroom, and that was it. There wasn't any support. And that's not because Springfield wasn't doing it right, it just wasn't a requirement. And so I, when ODE worked through the process of getting support for the teachers, I was very pleased to see that, because I knew that was something that was missing. So it is a very good thing.
Okay.
Number 10, employment of substitute teachers. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution regarding the employment of substitute teachers who do not hold a post-secondary degree and have completed the pre-employment requirements, including obtaining a valid temporary non-bachelor's degree, substitute teaching license, or pre-service teacher permit issued by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. And that is part of Exhibit Six.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Go ahead.
So, so what this is, is if you remember post-COVID when we were having a difficult time getting substitutes, ODE, DEW made that you didn't have to have a degree to do it. We know that we get amazing subs that don't have, you know, degrees that are there every day working with our kids. And what this is, is just a resolution saying that we will accept people who do not have a bachelor's degree. You know, I mean, they have to follow through the, you know, the different steps that they need to do. But we have gotten, I think we've done a really great job, I think, in the buildings. I mean, it seems like we're pretty full, a lot of times with, with subs, so it's out there.
Just to clarify, there's also still the requirement of the background check, so the fingerprinting, the FBI, BCI, in order to go through that process. So we're not just.
Just, well, it's anybody off the street, right. Right. And then the pre-service, that's something new that ODE or DEW has done this year. And what they're saying is that every teacher who's going in for student teaching has to get a pre-service license. The, the idea of that was if the colleges so chose that a student teacher can then substitute if their mentor teacher is not there. Okay? So right now, colleges are all over the place with it. Some colleges allow it, some colleges do not. Some colleges say pay your student teachers. If they're subbing, some colleges say do not. So they're still trying to get their feet wet with this, because it just came down the pike this year.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes. And thank you to the people who are willing to step up and help during this time.
So if anybody's out there listening, if they want to help solve, if anybody's out there listening, just reach out, and we will tell you where to go. Okay, okay, I meant to get your license.
Not which classroom to go to.
Source of information.
I heard a chuckle back there.
Number 11. It is recommended that the board approve the employment of the individuals on the Summit Educational Service Center substitute list as needed for the 24-25 school year. This Summit ESC oversees the credentials and licensure of each individual and makes additions and deletions as necessary through the school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so if you remember, two years ago, we went away from a company for the subs, and we took it on ourselves. So we were able to pay our subs more. But Summit County still does all the pre-checking and everything for us. So even though there's still, so like if somebody wanted a sub, they would contact myself, or they would contact Mary, and they'd say, we'd like the sub. And then what we would do is we would send them over to Summit County ESC. They're on our list. Now, if they choose to go on to one of the other lists, they can. But we're noticing that a lot of the ones that want a sub for us to sub it with.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes. Motion passed. It is recommended that the board approve the appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2025 as seen in Exhibit Seven.
So moved.
Mr. Hofer? Erme, excuse me. I just gave you another job. You don't want that.
No, not that one.
I'll check a little bit about appropriations. Since we're still on oversight, the general fund which represents the vast majority of our expenditures align with the pipe forecast and aligns with the report that was approved by the state. So they all have to align. And I'm gonna describe during my report what's coming up, and hopefully, I'm pretty confident that we'll get to say goodbye to our friends down in Columbus.
Can only wish.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Farola? Sorry, he's not here. Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes. Motion passed. Number 13. I'm sorry. College Credit Plus, that's one of my high points. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with Sinclair Community College for the College Credit Plus program for the 24-25 school year. And that memorandum is in Exhibit Eight.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And again, this is just our memorandums with the different colleges for students to take College Credit Plus courses. Anything you want to add, Mary?
No, not on this one, thank you.
Just not maybe?
I have so much.
And they are new, I believe.
Yes.
They to our offerings that the students can access.
Yep. So we're excited, they're excited, they're excited to be working with us, too.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number 14, donations. It is recommended that the board accept a donation of school supplies valued at $1,500 from Staples on Arlington Road. It's very generous.
So moved.
Second.
Mary, do you want to say?
Yeah, Staples, they're really awesome. They just call me up and say, hey, can you come and pick up these school supplies that we have donated? And we just work really well together, so they're even willing to drop them off, but I don't want them to have to go out of the way. So I'll go pick them up. This time, they donated a bunch of folders, some tab dividers, a bunch of pens, locker, like locker mirrors, and, gosh, there was so much.
Calculators.
There was a couple calculators in there, yeah. Like the graphing calculators. So it was a fabulous treasure trove of items. But they really do a great job for us here in Springfield. Like I said, they just, they'll call us up and say, hey, can you come get it? But we're like, we're there, anything for the kids.
Yeah, I'm out the door right now.
Yeah.
And what do you do with the supplies then?
The supplies then are divided up based off of age level and appropriateness, and then sent to the individual schools in order to support the students. I'm going to assume the calculators, like I know the calculators came up to the high school. It wasn't, it wasn't here on the day that they actually got moved and everything, so.
We had pens, and we had the locker organizers.
Nice, so yeah.
It's about six boxes full of items.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Uh-huh. Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
His computer went off and said, uh-huh.
It doesn't get to vote. I won't count that. Motion passed without Dustin's computer voting. Number 15, treasures report.
I promised the gentleman in the back I'd stay here in my thing. So I have a couple presentation, renewals. These, we have to just talk about the facts, okay? Before I talk about them, these are three nulls that have been passed by our taxpayers for 25 years. So that makes me pretty confident that they'll continue to pass them. But the magnitude, and these are just the three this year, they represent, just the three, 33% of the total revenue, property revenue. Add in the fourth, it's over 40%. The beauty about this is when we pass it, we'll have financial stability for, I put five years, being conservative. Five-plus years. That hasn't happened in this district for a long, long time. It will allow the district to do things that we haven't been able to do in the past. So let's see what that does to the five-year forecast. If you go down to the bottom, okay, a little up a little bit. If they don't, what happens if some unforeseen situation occurs and they don't pass, okay? If they don't, what happens if, uh, some unforeseen situation occurs and they don't pass, okay? As you can see, it will be $6,400,000 in the hole by '28. By '27, uh, the state will say you got to have a levy on in '26. But you go down here to line 11.01, if they do pass, you will see the amount of revenue these four renewals will generate, which will cost us, think about it right now, in '25, at the end of the year, I anticipate a $6.4 million cash balance. In '28, I anticipate over a $7 million cash balance. You don't see too many five-year forecasts going up. Now, it dips a little bit, but to have a forecast in '24 of that, at 4.5, and '28 at 7.055 makes a treasurer's heart skip a beat a little bit, you know? It's, it's wonderful. As we said in the beginning of the, uh, meeting, there's things going on in Springfield. Things are happening. Kids are getting excited. Uh, it's showing in the classroom, it's showing out in the, in the, in the athletic arena. Wouldn't it be great if it showed up in the finances? And again, this is, these are renewals. These are not new money. No operating. We dropped that 3.77 mil levy. That's all we're asking for, is what we've always received in the past, so it's pretty exciting. It's nice to say exciting things. That's it. Any questions?
So, if we pass these levies-
Yes.
You're saying that there's a chance the district doesn't have to ask for any new money-
Correct.
-coming even past 2028, 2029?
So, we're only allowed to speak about facts.
Right.
This is a fact.
This is a fact.
What I'm going to say, oh, go ahead.
Right, so, so my goal, you know, is that, you know, one, one thing that schools tend to do, districts tend to do when they pass a levy, is they all go hog wild. And all of a sudden, you know, it's, it's, and you can't. You have to know what you have to be able to spend, so our goal is to, five-plus years, our goal is to prolong it as long as we can, you know, give our kids what they need, the best that we can get them, you know, for what they need, but still being frugal and still being financially responsible. Because that's, that's the important part of this. And I feel, you know, looking at the numbers, I mean, we've, and Chris and I have sat down and we've played with numbers left, right, and sideways, and if we do play, I mean, we might go out to 2030. I mean, that's-
That would be the current seventh graders, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Would be graduating and never have to ask-
Okay, yeah.
-money.
Right.
And hopefully, every single year, getting something added back and given back.
Right.
If not more.
If not more, right. Right.
What's your fact?
So, my, I know there are people out there that will see this or hear this, and they will wonder, "Well, what about this?" Or, "What about that?" Or, "Can we believe this?" Or, "Have a question." And the fact is that you, we have a treasurer, we have a superintendent, both of whom are very capable and happy to, and I'm telling you, you're-
You're telling me I'm happy?
Have people come in, call, make an appointment, just drop by, uh, say, "Meet me for coffee," which I-
I know I've done, yeah.
Yeah, and just ask your questions and get your answers.
Correct.
And that's really what we need to do, because you, and I don't know if this is, I'm allowed to say this, because if we don't ask our questions, get our answers, and to have a positive, uh, response at levy time, then there are going to be other questions and other answers coming forth if it doesn't pass. So, did I stay within the law?
You certainly did. Yes.
Also, we have the Oversight Commission that will be more than glad, they told me on numerous occasions-
Yeah.
-to answer questions, come here. We, not only do, Charlie and I have to go through, but every month, we have to go through and satisfy the commission that everything looks good, and that's an extra assurance to the taxpayers that we're, we're doing what we say we're doing, so.
And, and one of the things we did say is that, um, you know, at our last meeting, if, um, if the renewals pass and we are released from the commission, the tools that they have given us to keep us in line, we are still going to use to help, to make sure that we're, and, and it's, um, spreadsheets that you can manipulate, add this, take this away, to keep us in line. So, you know, even though the commission meeting every, uh, month is, is, you know, could be tedious at times, it did give us tools to make sure that we don't fall into what we've fallen into previously.
There's no doubt in my mind that everyone is doing the very best that they're capable of doing. I, I do trust our treasurer and our superintendent and everyone else that has any say in spend or don't spend, to be doing it responsibly. And I hope I stayed within the law, but I-
I think you did.
All right. Um, anything, anyone? All right. A central office report.
Uh, two things that I want to mention. First of all, with a lot of the items we took action on this evening, retirements and reassignments and so on, um, that creates a domino effect throughout our staff, where staff move around and other positions are opened up. So, I'd like to, um, encourage the community, um, our website, springfieldspartans.org/jobs has a listing of, um, all of our current job openings there for the classified staff, um, so that is available. Within this, some of these will be internal movements. We do have, even some of these positions include, like, a standby bus driver we have. Those are permanent substitutes that we know we'll, we'll need and bring those on as positions there, so.
And, you know, even though some of these might be filled internally, it, like, Dustin said, it is a domino effect, so that will open up other positions. So, this is a, um, this is a working document, and it will change. It will change.
Um, the other item we'll mention here, but I just want to highlight, is October 10th, where we have no school for students, but staff report. We mentioned, uh, a couple of months ago that this will be a safety training day, so, uh, we'll send out more information to families and the general community about that day as it, um, comes closer. Uh, but on that day, you will see a lot of safety forces around the high school. We're going to, um, focus on that building and training at that site, but there'll be, um, members of local area law enforcements, not just Springfield and Lake More, um, and ambulance services and EMS, um, so on there, as we conduct this drill that day to prepare not only us, but help, uh, we'll help our safety forces as well, um, become familiar with the schools, our safety practices, and how we all can best communicate together. So, it'll be a very needed day and busy.
And being that it's just, I mean, being always said it's at the high school, it's at all staff, so any of the staff that wants to participate in it, so they can get the feel for it, it might not be their building, but they'll get the idea of what it is. And if any of you would like to attend, it is, it is more than welcome, open.
It's the 10th.
It's the 10th, and it starts at, um, eight o'clock, I think?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Thanks, Dustin.
Um, just a really quick overview. Uh, recently, DEW, the Department of Education and Workforce, released the Ohio School Report Cards. Um, Springfield has a lot to be proud of, and we have some celebrations. Last year, we scored three stars total. This year, we've moved up to 3.5 stars, which is a really, it's not an easy move, so it just does sound like half a star, but it, it is a very intense move. Um, we were very fortunate to exceed state's expectations in both our progress, which means moving the kids forward from their past performances, and gap closing, which is where if students should be here and they're actually here, it's the gap that closes between. Uh, so we definitely had that, and we were, we were good with, um, we met state expectations with achievement and graduation. So, when they put it all in the blender and mix it up and pop out, it comes out to 3.5 stars. I did include for each board member, the individual schools, instead of going into it in depth, because nobody wants to stay here all that long, if you want to talk about the state report card, uh, please feel free to stop in and see me. I will have a discussion with you, and you will walk out and not ever want to talk to me about it again, but it's got some really interesting concepts in, involved in it.
Um, just a little update about our preschool enrollment. We currently have 76, um, preschoolers enrolled in preschool, and 36 of those students are receiving some sort of early intervention, whether it be speech, or academic intervention, occupational therapy, or physical therapy. So, that's a great enrollment. We do still have some spots, so all the people out there and watching, if you have a student that is, has turned three by August 1st, or is four, and you're still interested in preschool, we do a monthly screening each month to, um, bring in new students if they begin the enrollment process. So, we've had a good start, a few tiers here and there, but for the most part, they're happy to come in to the doors and learn, start learning and growing, and starting to become early Spartans.
Um, I too want to thank, um, you know, regarding the report card, you know, the students, the teachers, the staff, the parents, the administrators, for a job well done. Um, you know, one of the things I know, uh, Mary talked about was the gap closing. Another one that we excel well in is progress, which looks at where our kids started the previous year and where they go. You know, the idea is that you want them to make the same growth, um, we make, we exceed that. So, every year, our kids are making the growth, which then goes into the gap closing that we're closing the gap. Um, one of the things that we needed to work on last year was early literacy. Uh, last year, we received one star in early literacy. This year, we moved it up to two stars, which is huge. Uh, with the new science of reading, um, our third graders will be-
Our first graders this year will be the first ones to get the full science of reading curriculum that we have implemented.
But, but then, but also with our multi-tiered systems of support, we're really working with our second and third graders, so early literacy is something that we are going to focus on. And I, um, and I was talking to Dave about this, you know, the difference between schools that got 3.5 and schools that got 4.0, a lot of it is in that early literacy part, and, um, that's something that, that we are working on, along with keeping our progress and our gap closing, you know, just keep improving on that. So, thank you to everybody who, um, worked very hard for this. This is a very proud, um, when we got up to a 3.5, that was exciting. Um, also, start of the new year, like everybody's been talking, I think it was a really great start of the new year. Um, we've been in school now for a month. It seems like we never ended from last year, just rolled right back in. And, um, walking through the buildings, like, you know, Parker, like you said, it, it's, you just get a different feel for the buildings, and it's, um, it's, it's good to, it's good to see that. Um, October is going to be a very busy month with all the, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, Halloween activities. Um, there is a lot going on in the month of October, so what we will do is we will put them on our website, um, on our social media, so you can see all the different, um, events that are happening. Uh, one of the big things, okay, um, so on Friday the 4th, we're having a Halloween festival presented by the Springfield Township, uh, Trick or Treat Pass for Children, and that's going to be right out here, isn't it? So, it's going to be our path that's located, and, uh, Springfield Township is going to be doing games, hayrides, police and fire displays, and Dumas food truck. Um, October 5th, let's see, October 5th, we've got the Springfield Baptist Church Fall Fest. That's through your church, isn't it? Um, uh, and with that, we got vendors, games, kids, and touch a trunk, right? Okay. Um, October 9th, from 6 to 9, is Springfield Assembly's Trunk or Treats. Friday, October 25th, it is, um, no, let's go, Saturday, October 26th, Haunted Shrop. Shrop used to be right after school on Monday, right? Was, uh-
Yeah, it's, it's Friday, Saturday.
Okay, so we're trying Saturday, 1 to 3, and, uh, hopefully, I know, um, it seems like a lot of times it, it goes a little bit later, so, you know, by 8 o'clock, people want to go home, so, but if it's a little bit later than 3 o'clock, I'm assuming you guys are okay with that. And then, then October 26th, something during, um, to Springfield, is the Turkey Festival?
No.
No, erased that. Phooop, that's gone. Saturday, October 26th, is Lake More Costume Contest at the, uh, Lake More Methodist Church. And then April 20, and then, uh, April.
Wow.
And then, uh, then October 26th is Springfield and Lake More's Designated Trick or Treat. And then October 30th is Springfield-Lake More Library Boo Bash, and that's at the Lake More Plaza, and everybody just sits out there, the kids walk, it's, it's pretty fun. Saturday, November 2nd, is, uh, the Springfield Township Women's Club's Craft Show, and I do believe that starts like at 8 to 5. And then, November 2nd, is the Turkey Fest. So, a lot going on. That was a lot that I just said. I wasn't planning on reading all those, but thank you, those will be on our website. So, a lot of things going on in our community, and a lot of integration between school and, and the different, um, churches and, um, community that's out there, so it's exciting. All right, I'm done.
We're going to be busy.
We're going to be, oh, yes.
Okay.
These, oh, one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
When you read the dates, I just want to emphasize one more time, not, not one more time, because we haven't emphasized it yet, so I'll emphasize it now. Um, we are changing October's, uh, board meeting date next month to the 22nd. You're going to read it again, so you'll mention it again, but I'm mentioning it the first time. So, it was from, um, whatever that Tuesday was before, October 22nd, now moved to October 22nd. And thank you, everybody, for being, um, being able to do that. I'm done. Okay.
All right, these items of your note are related to, uh, you're not going to get any candy or anything to these. These are just school-related. So, September 26th, uh, we start with conferences, so that's the high school junior high conferences from 3 to 7, and then the following week, October 3rd, high school junior high conferences, 3 to 7. And October 10th, uh, we've mentioned this before, but this is the, no school for students, but this is the, uh, date that the safety program will, uh, occur. And it's good to mention it, because we don't want parents driving up the road and seeing all the police cars out there-
Oh, that'd be an oops.
Turning right around and going back, where, where's my kid? October 11th is NEO, uh, N-E-O-E-A Day, and that is a day where there is no school. October 14th, no school. October 17th, now we've moved to the second group of conferences, and those will be at Shrop from 3:30 to 7:30 PM. And October 18th, already, the, that will be the end of the first quarter. Oh, my gosh. And, um, October 22nd, next regular school board meeting here, uh, at 6:00 PM. October 24th, the second round of Shrop conferences from 3:30 to 7:30. And November 7, Spring Hill Conferences, 3:30 to 7:30, and November 14, Spring Hill Conferences, 3:30 to 7:30. And everyone can go home on October, November 15th and rest.
Yes.
Although it's not on there.
Yes, it's on.
Okay, at this point-
We have one more thing. David has one more thing.
We have a Student of the Month from PLCC. Zach Hathaway is a ninth, 12th grader who is at PLCC full-time. He is in the welding program at PLCC, so congratulations, Zach Hathaway, senior welding from Springfield.
Thank you for including that. At this point, are there any citizens' comments on general items? Does not have to be, um, related to agenda. Seeing none, then we are ready for motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the meeting be adjourned at this time. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Forola?
Yes. Meeting adjourned, and thank you for those of you who came to, uh-